The council cannot discuss other topics at this town meeting. Tonight's presentation is, as the other council members wish to have their presentation or provide comments, and then when that's done, we will open it up for questions and answers, or comments from the start of the program. During a Greenville Board of Development meeting in August 21st, it was identified that the property located next to the GMA at 2601 King Street was up for sale. It was identified the building was approximately seventeen thousand square feet and sitting on approximately 1.3 acres. The list price for the property was $650,000. During my drive home from the G-BOG meeting, I called the city manager and suggested we look into the property, as I thought it might be a good location for the fire department's administrative building, as it was a good size and had plenty of space to park fire trucks as needed. Previously, a long time ago, the council had had several discussions about the need to replace the old fire admin building, and it was built in 1953. The current admin building is smaller than needed and is in need of replacement. In discussions with the previous city manager during the time that we approved the new fire station number one, I think the estimate to build the new fire admin building was somewhere close to a million dollars. I felt that this building next to the GMA was in good shape, that it would be a lot cheaper than starting from scratch. The property was shown to me, the mayor pro tem, and the city manager on August 28th. I raised the idea of possibly buying the property with the city council on September And I did so in executive session. During this executive session, a lot of discussion was done about the possible uses of the new building beyond the fire admin building, among which included the possibility of moving the Greenville Board of Development into the space, moving a majority of City Hall into the space, maybe building a big conference room that could be used by several entities, establishing a more modern emergency operations center, and if the building was not worthwhile, it could be demolished and turned into a parking lot for the GMA. However, none of these possibilities were committed to by the council, because we flat didn't know the condition of the building nor the final price that could be achieved. The purpose of this discussion in executive session was that if the council agreed with the potential benefit of buying the property, that any offer made to the property would need to be made without identifying the city as the purchaser. The list price, as I said, for the building was $650,000. During the council discussion on the property, we discussed price comparisons of what other properties in downtown were sold, specifically the building that is now the Emerald Ballroom, and also what was paid for the building catty corner from Landen's Winery that is currently under construction to become a new restaurant, and I think they put their sign up today. The council felt that the $650,000 price was too high, and we agreed upon making an offer of $400,000, which is 38% less than the list price, and we wanted 90 days to be able to evaluate the property. As part of our offer, we agreed to pay $5,000 earnest money, with the caveat that if the decision was made not to buy the property, that the seller would only be able to keep $1,000 of the earnest money. A draft of the offer was given to the city attorney on September 12th to review. The initial written offer was sent to the selling real estate agent two days later, using a stand-in buyer name, which did not identify the city as the potential buyer. On September 19th, we received a counter offer from the seller of $525,000, with the seller agreeing with all of the other conditions, specifically the 90 days for inspection and for the amount of earnest money that he would be able to keep. I discussed the counter offer with the rest of the city council in executive session on September 25th, which was our next regular council meeting. At that time, the council agreed, and we made a counter offer of $475,000. But because the... But because the looks of the roof and the possibility of asbestos components being present, the council wanted 120 days to evaluate the property, not just 90 days. On September 27th, the seller agreed to the $475,000, but would only agree to the original 90-day evaluation period. The council agreed to this, and on September 28th, a check for the earnest money was sent to the city attorney, who subsequently, on October 9th, sent a cashier's check to the seller. Keep in mind that if the seller did not decide to buy the building, that only $1,000 of the earnest money could be kept by the seller. On October 9th, a potential purchase contract was held by both the city and the seller. The city manager was directed to find someone who could do a full building evaluation of the property. As Councilman Evans identified during our last city council meeting, on October 14th, he sent me a request that the citizens of Greenville be informed as soon as possible. However, at that time, the city was still using a stand-in buyer's name on the potential purchase agreement, so as to allow future negotiations if needed without identifying the city as the potential buyer. On October 17th, the city manager hired KSA, a company out of McKinney who had previously done work for the city, to conduct a building study. On November 8th, the KSA finished their evaluation of the property, and it was emailed to the full city council on November 9th. The city attorney identified that we needed at this point to legally change from a stand-in buyer's name and identify the city as the proposed buyer. On November 16th, the email that was sent to all the council members was, I'm sorry, an email was sent to all the council members identifying that the city's identification was complete, and that they were free to discuss the potential purchase agreement with anyone they saw fit. Also, as part of the effort to determine the value of the property, on November 27th, the city manager hired Alpha Testing to perform a Phase 1 environmental assessment, as well as an asbestos assessment. The asbestos assessment was received on December 7th, and the evaluation, or the environmental report was received on December 14th. Now, the KSA building assessment report that we had requested contained the following information: the information about the general context and location of the building, about the existing site, its exterior, structural condition, roof condition, existing building systems, existing codes and accessibility, potential hazards and environmental issues, and some recommendations he had as far as what to do, and then he provided an estimate of probable cost to remodel. At this time, because of Thanksgiving holiday, the next scheduled city council meeting was set for December 11th. Without calling a special meeting, this would be the first time the council could discuss the findings from the KSA report, and also find out about the asbestos report, both of which would be used in deciding if we wanted to buy the property. However, two days before the council meeting, on December 9th, the Herald Banner produced a headline and said, quote, "New city offices, three and a half million plus project eyed", unquote. The lead sentence in the paper stated, "The Greenville City Council is considering a three and a half million to five million dollar project for the old grocery store at 2601 King Street, and then extensively renovated or demolished the dilapidated building, and moved city administration and fire department's offices there," unquote. While the three and a half million to five million was contained in the KSA report, that was identified by the contractor as probable cost to renovate, it was not the purpose of the KSA report. As I said earlier, the Herald Banner either misunderstood what the KSA report said, or they received erroneous information about the report, and subsequently reported an inaccurate article. Had the Herald Banner asked either me or the city manager for a copy of the report, what the city planned to do with the property, how would it be paid for, or what would happen if the council voted not to buy the property, I believe they would have produced a more accurate article. Now, as for how the property was intended to be funded, it was through the use of the tax reinvestment zone funds, or TIRZ, as it's abbreviated, T-I-R-Z. Prior to even making an offer to the seller, I asked the city attorney if it was possible to use the TIRZ money, use part of the $2.3 million sitting in the TIRZ fund to buy the property. The TIRZ balance, for any of you that would like to see it, is on page 45 of the existing city budget. It's available in the library, or you can come and look at it in the city offices. I was told yes. This would mean that there was no need to add additional debt to the city, as the TIRZ funds are available. It was because of a misunderstanding I had that I didn't consult the TIRZ board earlier. The TIRZ zone consists of 1,904 acres. According to the city TIRZ ordinance that was established in 2008, the TIRZ was established for the zone, which may be divided into sub-accounts as authorized by subsequent ordinance. The only TIRZ contract that the city has, and has had it for 10 years, has to do with approximately 63 acres, as shown here, associated with the Greenville Town Center region, which includes, for those of you that are not familiar with it, Splash Kingdom and some of the restaurants, including Panda Express and Red crib. I was under the impression that TIRZ board only had responsibility for TIRZ activities and funds within the town center area, and not the entire 1,900 acres. And since the possible purchase on King Street did not affect the town center's TIRZ zone, I was under the impression the council could use the TIRZ tax money for other things as allowed by the federal tax code, section 311.008, without going to the TIRZ board first. This was my misunderstanding. Now, where do we go from here? Tonight, we have the town hall meeting, and as I said, we've given you a series of facts. Tomorrow, we will have a regular city council meeting with the King Street project to be discussed in executive session. The city council still has things to discuss and decide. We have not made the decision yet to buy the property or to just walk away from it. That will be discussed in executive session. On January 16th, we will meet with the TIRZ board to get their advice and recommendations on the project and the financing plan. Then on January 22nd, I guess I should keep up. On January 22nd, the city council meeting, we will have discussions on a potential purchase of the building, and will vote on a potential purchase, but it will be done in an open session, in an open session agenda. And by February 9th, the opportunity to buy that property will expire. In summary, the city discussed the possible acquisition of 2601 King Street in executive session, as allowed by law, in an effort to potentially get a cheaper price for the possible acquisition. The city's initial offer was 38% below the listing price. The KSA report was one of the reports the council was using to determine if we wanted the site. The others include the Phase 1 environmental assessment and an asbestos assessment report. These were not hidden secrets for months, they were available to the council members to discuss openly within a week of receipt. The council discussed several potential uses for the property, including fire admin building, emergency operations center, moving Greenville Board of Development into the space, moving the majority of City Hall into the space, building a big conference room available for several entries, and if the building was not worthwhile, possible demolition and use of the space for parking for the GMA and City Hall. The council has not yet made a decision about the purchase of the property, nor have we decided that we intend to spend millions of dollars for new city offices. We are primarily considering only the purchase of the contiguous property. Thank you. At this point, would any of the council members, James, do you wish to say a few comments?
I was going to go last, but I think that...
No, I'd like it to move across, please.
I want to begin my remarks tonight with something very special to me and for this town, is to say thank you to the Herald Banner. Not only have they covered school, in my opinion, it's my opinion, I think they've covered the city business in depth, they've made efforts, they've got people out here tonight. Same thing for other areas in town. So again, Herald Banner, Travis Hargrove, Chris McKirkendall, thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to also thank... Mine was a standing round of applause. I want to thank Hunt County News also covering this tonight also, for the people that are at home, they can keep up with this, several people today, so they would be watching tonight. My concern all along, not whether we bought or didn't buy to start with, I was open to suggestions. Parking lot would be a nice thing to have downtown, other things, but I wanted input from the citizens. Again, with my school background, there's no difference. I know people are tired of me saying it, but there's just no difference in school business and city business. You've got to involve the taxpayers, you've got to involve the parents, you've got to involve the public. That's what I was concerned about. I also was concerned about buying another piece of property. We already own, on Jordan Street, the new fire station. We owned that block pretty much that was purchased originally, back when I first, one of the first couple of years on the council. That's where we intended to do the new fire administration as the money became available, not to go into debt for it, but it's the money built up. A new fire administration is going to be built back there with the training center, and again, on the same block, same property with it. I want to thank former Mayor Jim Morris, my good friend, his wife Jean here tonight, and again, I want to thank you for the excellent editorial that was printed in the paper Sunday. You also brought up the fact, and again, it goes back to history, you've got to involve the public to get the history. History, if you don't know it, you make mistakes. Former Mayor Morris pointed out that we also own property back there in the area of the new police station and the landmark back in there that was purchased, and it's still available for city use. Again, these are things that need to be considered, and again, without public input, I would have forgotten about that property completely. The structure price, again, we had concerns, but again, it was executive session, and we couldn't discuss it. I looked up on Hunt County CAD, which you're welcome to go home and do if you looked up the dress up, and the property, the land value stayed the same, the way I remember it. I didn't have time to look this up before I came, but it was around $87,000, if I remember from there to go. If someone has a different figure, correct me. That's never been constant for all five years on CAD. This is available to anybody that wants to look it up on Hunt County Appraisal District. The structure, the structure, which we found did have issues, had gone down several years before, in a row, down, then all at once, went up about $141 or something like that, $1,000 a year ago. And I've got it in my mind, wonder what caused, or what precipitated that increase in the price. Asbestos. I sat beside the real estate agent when GISD purchased TechStop that night, purchased TechStop. The real estate agent did something you don't do, he's a good friend of mine, we sat right together. He stood up, and he said, "Madam President, do you have a Phase 1 environmental? You've got to get one. I know you don't have it, I'm your agent. I'm going to make the money, but advise you to get a Phase 1 environmental." That's one thing, again, I mentioned from the very first about the environmental situation on the building. The original statements to us were, was that the building was built in the mid-'80s or somewhere in the 1980s. I was born in 1950. I remembered, I told them with my mom, shopping at Safeway, it's still a Safeway building to me, and always will be. Milton, you're nodding your head, you remember too. I knew it had to be back in the '50s, if it's in the '50s, guess what? You've got the A-word, asbestos has got to be in it. And again, I find it interesting that we didn't seek a Phase 1 environmental or any kind of environmental until the 27th of November, and then we received that information on December 7th. I just made these notes during the presentation on a piece of paper I had in my pocket. The TIRZ meeting, the TIRZ meeting, Sue Ann Harding was chairwoman. Great respect for Sue Ann Harding, another former mayor. I attended that meeting. Believe I was the only council person there. Had the pleasure of being there with several people here tonight, Dr. Jack Adams, Dwayne Wade, enjoyed the meeting. Jack was on the committee. They had not been consulted, and this is, the TIRZ money we're spending, and they hadn't been consulted. Was down at the courthouse today. Courthouse, beautiful, restored building down there, great history. What was said to me today when I walked in by a county official, "We've got money in that TIRZ account too. We haven't been consulted. School district's got money in it," again, I was reminded by this county official this afternoon. I have not opposed this from the start, I have sought to get public input, make you aware, and again, just like Mayor Morris down there, or back there. Again, I didn't know we had another property back behind the landmark, I'd forgotten about that. And again, thank you for reminding me of that. I talked with several real estate agents after we were allowed to talk to people, and the first real estate agent I talked to made the comment, "One thing, the four, only $475, $475,000 needs to be made of one at the most." And again, that's where we're dealing with taxpayer dollars that are very, very massive to me. You watch the pennies, my mom and dad said, "The dollars will take care of themselves." All I want is the input from y'all, and I thank you tonight for being here, and again, I don't thank you for being here, you wouldn't have known about it, would have voted on it probably back in December, or could have, had the potential to, but again, without the Greenville Herald Banner. And again, Crystal Kirkendall is one of the finest editors I've ever had the pleasure of meet. Travis Hargrove, you do an absolute fantastic job also covering the city, and I thank you very much, and I'm honored to be at a meeting where y'all are also attending. Thank you very much, continue to give us input, it's not over yet, the story still goes on. Consider you friends, let me know what you think. Thank you. Thank you. John, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I was pretty much finished over.
The only thing I would say is I would...
Speaking?
Yes, sir. Good evening, I'm Holly Gotcher, and I want to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. I thank you for coming out, and hopefully you're here to make your voice known. I don't want to do a lot of talking, because I can talk sometimes too long. I'm here to listen tonight, and I thank, I thank every one of you, I'm looking you each of the eye, who have come to me personally, who have sent emails, thank you for the letter. I'm just here to listen, and then I'll talk. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, then we will set it up, and we will open it for questions and comments. When you do come up, please use the speaker up here so that everybody can hear you. Please give your name and address when asking a question or making a comment. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand so that we can get, we don't get everybody coming at once. Mayor? Come on up. And I won't report that I can answer all the questions, that's why the rest of the council is here to chime in or answer the question.
Well, I'm going to, again, what I said, again, as I said, I said I was going to come tonight, but I wasn't going to say anything. But, James has already given you, given you the history of what's going on. But, another thing, and the council made a decision that I watched it...
Is the microphone on?
Some time ago.
I think the microphone's not turned on, there should be a on and off button on there.
Just tell us, just tell us if anybody was changed.
Maybe a little closer to it.
And she asked me, and I was going to say I haven't had it, and I said, "No, no." The thing of it, I had one, when you, so, towards the 20th of July, it was in Sparts Park, I didn't, with that, I thought, I know this 20th of July is money, and there's other, other services in the area that cost money to do that. But it's hard to remember, there's been a public swimming pool in the reason, and I dictated to see that go. But my comment to her was, "I'm not going to anything, I'm through. If they tear down the municipal building and put a splash pad where it is..." So anyway, I've been known for writing letters to the editor, and, but I had, I guess it's probably been six years, I didn't write one, I didn't write anything. But, I don't know, this, when I was elected mayor in 2003, one of the main things that just, they kept telling me, Bob Scott was the city attorney at the time, he said, "I will tell you something," he said, "that if I have some decisions, that is, if you can get on top of the steeple at Central Christian Church, and tell the decision that you've made, and it's not worth a dime, then it goes through the council, public meeting, and it's furthered up majority of the council." Well, I had some orientation, Debbie Newell was there at the time, and I can't tell you how much I had been, but Debbie kind of did a little over this, because she had the experience of, you know, many mayors coming and going, and she explained to me the, uh... the, uh, what's that call, that you have to do this thing...
The meeting's there.
Oh, hopefully. She covered that with me, and then North Texas Council of Government had a seminar that I went to, and they had one whole item on it to discuss, and had, had not to be sure that you, uh, get involved. From what I was told then, I think that active, and by the way, it's this particular, or even, you have to, to, Lord of the council, you have David Wade sit here and have a lot of respect for all of them, but, they don't know that, I'm just getting what they're told me, and I don't see how you could possibly have gone this far with this item, this acquisition, this property, without having a, in an open council meeting. I mean, making an offer for it, putting that deposit for it, I always thought, in my, the Herald Banner says you, the community is sacred, I don't believe in the sacred or not, it's such a one now, and it never was discussed in an, in an open council meeting. So, that's, and then, as I said in my letter, I think the tradition is, I, this property, especially at that price, when we have several places to put it, and ideally, with my information, this is one right behind the police enforcement, there's a police department, our department there, so, that, that would be what I would do, but I'm not there anymore. So, whatever you do, and you will hear your flipper there, because...
Thank you. Thank you. As identified, we were not looking at getting a, hey, buying a building to build new offices, we were looking at the contiguous property next to the GMA. Go ahead, next question. Milton?
I'm going to pick it up so people can hear. Milton Bad, 3403 Lee Street. By the way, my family has lived in this neighborhood in approximately 120 years, so we have a little bit of estate there. years, so we have a little bit of estate there. And from my point of view, uh, North Greenville and this neighborhood needs a grocery store more than it needs another parking lot. But first really, I'd like to thank this council for having, uh, this forum. It's very needed, it's a chance for us to understand your thinking, and a chance for you to find out what we think about your thinking, so I really appreciate it. Also, I really appreciate the Herald Banner. Uh, the Herald Banner, a newspaper's role is to, uh, report all sides of the issue, not just the government side. So, uh, thank you very much for doing that, we appreciate your professionalism. I'm kind of want to ask, I have some comments, and there are a couple of questions inside of these comments, but, you know, you have to wonder why the council had to seek the TERS funds for the project. And I think the reason is, is because it was, uh, never a crucial need expressed in the regular budget process for either office space or a parking lot. Uh, so, since it was not expressed by department heads of a need, you had no study to show there's a need for either one, uh, that's why none of it came up in the regular budget. So when this thing came up, you had to go looking elsewhere for the money. Um, now, the TERS board apparently was not informed or consulted, uh, and now, uh, apparently they might not be legal to use. But still, uh, as you explained to Mayor, thank you that you have a vote tomorrow night to consider hiring an out-of-town, uh, law firm, to find out if there's a workaround around these TERS rules that, that were publicly debated, uh, when it was first put in place. And you have an executive session, uh, to consider whether to proceed with this purchase or not. Now, if the TERS funds turns out that they cannot be used, where is the money going to come from? Is, would it come from the general fund? Uh, and if it is going to come from the general fund, what are you going to cut? The police or fire department, parks and rec, the street department? I would really challenge any person up there, any city council person, to take a ten-minute drive around Greenville, and come back here and look us in the eye, and tell us with a straight face that all of our streets are in great condition, and they need no additional funds. Or, if you're not going to take it out of existing general fund, are you going to take it to the tourism fund? You've already raided these funds, and defunded important tourism promotions by nonprofits that did the same work a few years ago for less money than what you're spending now. And if you go ahead with the project, we're either going to wind up with another property taken off the tax rolls, and a parking lot, or city offices, depending on what you decide to do. Now, the GMA, uh, has, you know, its anniversary is coming up this year, eighty years we've had that auditorium. And if its parking's the goal, why, you know, why is it suddenly an emergency? It's been a success for eighty years, this venue. We also have, uh, appreciate, I'd forgotten also about the, uh, city owning additional property behind the police enforcement building, but there are also two lots that are either owned or used by some arrangement by the city, immediately adjacent to this. Right across Pickett, there's a lot that bears the name of the city of Greenville at least, and it's locked all the time. Only people that can park there are city employees. On the, uh, north side, there's a smaller lot. By the way, that lot has, uh, I went out there and counted them, it's about fifty parking spaces there that are not available to the public. Then there's a little lot across the street, uh, that's also not available to the public, only city, uh, vehicles are seen parked there. That would probably yield another fifteen or twenty lots. How about looking into maybe opening those up to the public before you have to go up, uh, acquire another one? I also went out yesterday and walked this property, the Safeway, uh, building property. Uh, there are, by my count, sixty-eight parking spaces there right now, plus the building. If you tore down that building, you might be able to squeeze in another fifty or so parking lot spaces where that building sits. That's about a hundred and twenty spaces altogether. Uh, now, you're going to build the, uh, um, hopefully if you buy it, you say you're going to get the, a property for about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Well, I'm sure, uh, to demolish the building would be at least a hundred thousand dollars, maybe much more. But let's just be optimistic, I say it was a hundred thousand. If you add that to the, uh, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, and divide that out by the number of parking spaces you would get, that's, uh, four thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars per parking space. Also, that does not include asphalt, lighting, fencing, or landscaping, which certainly the city would want to do, uh, right as visitors come in to attend the GMA. Surely you won't have a one-point-three acre black asphalt square on the ground. Uh, also, you know, AT&T building is right, uh, adjacent to you, and that building is not occupied the way it once was. I drive by there a lot of times, and that, their parking lot is essentially empty all the time, two or three trucks, then some type of an arrangement being made with AT&T to use their parking lot during events. Uh, we have the Paul Matthews Parking Garage downtown. I was, uh, doing some, uh, research the other day, and happened upon, uh, an issue of the Herald Banner from nineteen sixty-four, when that, uh, remodel of that building was announced. They had a special issue just on that. And one of the things that they mentioned was in building that three-story parking garage, it was engineered so that three more stories could be added to it. As it is now, there's a hundred parking spaces there. It could be expanded, and it would double it to two hundred spaces. I know you, uh, dispensed with that, uh, property to the county, but once again, just with AT&T, an agreement could be struck to use that parking space, uh, by the city. And maybe, if there are people that don't like to make that long of trek for little money, small money, you can get a little tram or trolley that would, uh, you know, take people from there to the auditorium if needed to be. But how about the ones that are willing to walk? You have a lot of parking spaces across, uh, Lee Street, as has been mentioned, and there are also some other lots there. Uh, if people walk to the, uh, municipal building, or to the auditorium from Lee Street, they also pass businesses where they might get something to eat, or a drink, or buy something. What's the matter with that? Uh, how about exposing our town, all the town, not just the GMA? If, you know, if you have the first-rate parking lot there, that's good, but they're going to get in their car, go in, come back out, get in the car, leave. If they have to walk past some of their businesses, we might get a little more of their money. God knows we need it. Every, every dollar we get from a visitor, we don't have to get from our own residents. Uh, I'm getting near the end here. Uh, another reason that you need additional money coming in from sales taxes and such as that, is that you need to make up the lost revenue. If you take this property off the tax rolls, you will lose the property tax that would be collected, and you'll also be foregoing the sales tax that a grocery store would generate. So thank you all very much for listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Yes.
Hello. I'd like to come here. I'm here in need for fourteen Division Street. Um, I'd like to applaud the previous speakers, they've covered really most of the things that I wanted to say. I'd like to applaud the city council for taking a proactive approach to looking at the property, I think that's a good thing. I too think the price seems awfully high for what we're going to get. I really like what Milton said about, you know, grocery store. I used to live over on Walnut Street, and if I lived there now, it's, it's a little bit of a fight to a grocery store. Um, and I have a question, and maybe I'm naive, but what is the value in hiding who's making inquiries into that space? What was the value, why, why did the city decide to do that?
If I can answer that.
Okay.
If you had a piece of property, and you were going to sell it, and we came up and we said the city of Greenville wants to buy that property, but we would like a reduced price, we don't think it's worth that value. You as a seller's going to say, the city's got deep pockets, there's no way I'm going to reduce the price. So it's not a normal or an abnormal thing to not necessarily identify that a city is buying a piece of property if we're trying to negotiate and get a better price. Now, on similar track, the four hundred and seventy-five that was offered was predicated on, we believe the building was usable. Whether the council as a whole still agrees with that price or not, we will talk about tomorrow night. Uh, but when you initially make an offer, you look at the property, you look at the availability of it, but the reason we did that is to try and get the best price we could for the citizens.
Um, I guess in, again, being naive, I'm not sure I agree with that argument.
You're right on that.
I don't think, I don't think that, that people necessarily think cities have deep pockets. Some do, some don't, but it doesn't matter to what the property was worth. And I believe it, it, it kept something under wraps longer, which facilitated this whole secrecy thing, which is always a problem with government. So, I think it's something to think about in the future, as far as any projects go. How long do you keep that under wraps? Um, I, I do question the ability to just spend money without any kind of open meeting, and I, I know it's only a thousand dollars, but it's a thousand dollars. Uh, I applaud the Herald Banner for publishing. I, I am curious as to the relationship between the city and the Herald Banner, are, do we do press releases anymore?
We do press releases quite often.
So, a press release might have, have made this, this whole issue less contentious. Um, the last thing that I'd like to say is, um... I like that the city is being proactive, but I think openness is just as valuable. And I really very much appreciate the, that you had this forum for us, um, and I'd like to thank the previous speakers for covering most of my points. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Jim Cuthbert, I live at five four zero Oakbury Drive in Greenville. I've been a resident here for about fifty years, or less, probably a little more. But, uh, the history, as I remember it, the, the cities had experienced buying buildings before, and it's always turned out badly.
I'm sorry, can't, can't understand.
The city has bought buildings before, and it's always turned out very badly. They're not good at it. Not, not good at it at all. Further, I would, the way this been put together, which is kind of under the, under the carpet, you know, we're not, not, we're not aware of what you're doing. And then further, you never really could justify the need for a building where you don't have property to put one. The, the, to think that another grocery store is going to go in there, I think is kind of odd, not foolish. Even two of them have gone broke in that same, same area, why would anybody else want to put a grocery store there? The only thing I would suggest, they're, they've got this, this money way higher, what, the bids and that are way higher than it should be. I'd offer them a hundred grand, put about a hundred grand in, make a parking lot, and be done with it.
Thank you very much, and for past times when the city has made bad purchases, there's not a lot I can do about that, that didn't happen during our time. Yes?
Hello, I'm Gary Bailey, I live at one eleven St. Keith Street. First of all, I'd like to thanks you and the city council for being, coming up for it, and being honest with us, you know, with this town hall meeting, you know, because the last meeting, it, you know, about what the newspapers telling us, it ended up like, you know, people's being honest with the citizens, so I appreciate you're doing this, you know, but I'm not in favor of the purchase of the building, because I think we can lower the taxes, do, do other repairs in the city. The wall process in this building, what I have, does not meet state standard. The, the state standard for wall process is forty PSI, this got about fifteen pounds PSI, and, so, rather, you can spend money in this building to bring it up to code, and others don't see, and you say, you, you told us that it will cost us taxpayers any money this year, but what about next year? When the budget come around, and you might want to raise our taxes, you know, because there's a, you know, sort in the, um, budget, uh, I'm, I'm not in favor of that, so, you know, that's, so, thank you.
Thank you. The city has cut the taxes for the, the taxpayers the last two years, for a total of four and a half cents over the last two years. So yes, we're looking at that, we monitor that, we're not trying to buy a grocery store, and my thought on the use of the TERS money is it already exists, it was paid for, it's sitting in the bank, and I think the city ought to be able to utilize that money.
Good evening, my name's Chuck Francie, I live at thirty-three forty State Highway twenty-four Campbell. I'm part of, I'm one of the TERS board members, and I want to say that I appreciate each one of y'all for coming out and talking to the TERS board when we didn't have a meeting. There's a lot of things that, you know, we didn't understand that was coming through the paper. There are things that the public knows about, some things are kept behind closed doors, and there's a reason for that, and I do want to say that, but one question I have is, you were talking about, you put five thousand dollars to Ernest's money.
Correct.
If you don't use that, or decide not to buy the building, teaching on the tip of the dollar.
Correct.
Okay. How much money has the city spent on, uh, on the business, or the, you know, as far as, uh, taking a look at the structure, what is that, KSA?
KSA.
Okay. How much money was spent on that?
Summer, you've got the numbers?
Uh, the KSA report costs twenty-seven fifty, the asbestos report costs twenty-five hundred, which was done by Alpha Testing, and the phase one environmental was, uh, cost three thousand dollars. So the total of all three of those was eighty-two fifty.
Okay, so eighty-two fifty is what the city's at right now, and then if they decide not to buy the building, there's another thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so, if the city decides not to buy, purchase this building, then right now the city's at ten thousand dollars. Uh, I mean, that's just not a lot of money. I mean, I understand we got to know what's going on with that building, from what I know of the building, uh, it's not a smart move, uh, because of the problems that's going on with it. Not only that, but it's been four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to turn it into a parking lot, that's not worth money either. So...
But a lot of people...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, go ahead.
I was just wondering how much money right now the city's out, because, you know, nobody's asked that question yet. Everyone's stuff on that thousand dollars that the city would be out, but let's look at the big picture.
I think one of the things that is missed here is, none of the people on the council, and the majority of the people in the audience, are not building experts. We did not know what, whether the building was worthwhile or not. I hear a lot of people saying, it's really a rat trap, it's, it's dilapidated and everything else. We wouldn't have known that if we hadn't gone out and asked for these kinds of assessments. The asbestos report came out as part of the, the KSA, that we needed to look at that and have that evaluated. The overall condition of the building was highlighted in the KSA report. It would be totally improper, in my mind, and in the minds of the majority of the council, to even consider buying a building. And as far as four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, as I stated earlier, that offer was made predicated on the thought that the property would be worthwhile and the building could be used and maybe save the city some money when we rebuild or when we put in a new fire admin building.
Well, I can tell you the fire admin building up in over there, we need one.
I agree.
The problem for that, when you got lights falling from the ceiling and hitting people, it's a, that is session one for us, so, uh, out of that. And not only that, but having it closer to where you can have the admin building, to where they can put the fire safety and everything, if you have a, so the party can kind of run all over the place, uh, that would save them a lot of time, too.
It's also a natural location, as we identified for the emergency operations center. If, if we have a tornado come through or we have something else like that, you've got to have an operational center that you communicate with people and be able to get things done. That was one of the areas that the council had looked at as a possibility of going in there if the building was sturdy enough to do that. But we didn't know, and we made an offer so that we could get people in there. That doesn't mean that we're gonna stay with that offer. That will be decided by the council tomorrow night.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Morgan Jones, and my address is eighty-eight seventeen Cheyenne Drive in Greenville, Texas. Um, thank you all for hosting this and taking our questions and hearing our concerns, and thank you to the Herald Banner and Hunt County News for also doing coverage of all of this. Um, I had a couple of questions, so if you want me to pause between each one, so y'all can answer, I don't mind doing that. Uh, but my first question was, I'm wondering who the agent assisting the city in buying the property is?
Who's, who's buying the property?
The real estate agent that is assisting the city and doing the contract and the negotiations.
The city use, uh, Tarpley Realtor, they've been in business for ninety years here or more.
Okay, is it?
I frankly don't know who the selling real estate agent is.
Okay, um, so is the buying agent of the city, uh, Mr. Randall Tarpley?
Pardon me?
Is the buying agent for the city, the one, the agent assisting the city, Randall Tarpley?
Is Tarpley, yes, they're a local, uh, site here.
Okay, so is it a conflict of interest possibly that, uh, Mr. Tarpley is on the Board of Development as a chairman, that he would be receiving a commission from the sale of the property?
No, it's not a legal conflict of interest. It's been investigated when the question was asked.
Okay. And the other question I had was, you said that the, the city put up five thousand dollars earnest money, and if the contract doesn't go through, um, they lose a thousand of that.
Correct.
I'm curious as to why the city didn't make all of the option, or, sorry, the earnest money refundable, and why not do a smaller amount of an option fee, such as five hundred dollars or even two hundred and fifty or a hundred as collateral instead of a thousand dollars that we're gonna lose? I mean, I'm a real estate agent, I understand these contracts, so there's the option fee, why did we do the earnest money instead of just a smaller option fee that the city would be out, less than half of what we might be out of if they don't move forward?
Typically, when you buy a building, whether it's a, a residential, uh, facility, whether it's a commercial building, the person has it on the market. When you give them earnest money, they are taking it off the market, but nobody else can make a bid on it, nobody else can do anything. The reason for giving them money back if you walk away from it is they deserve some compensa, compensation for the time that they've not been able to sell that. They can put it back on the market, but they've had, they've suffered a timeframe when it couldn't be used.
Yes, but the option fee works that way as well, so, and typically, option, option fee is way less than earnest money, so I was just curious as to why an option fee wasn't used instead of doing part of the earnest money.
I don't have an answer on that.
Thank you.
You have a question back there?
Hello, James Russell, one two five Shawnee Street, is this working? Okay. Continuing on her path, um, the company that you're buying the property from, Invektor Investments LP, are any of you familiar with that company? I'm not, not familiar with it.
We're not the seller. The seller may know who that is, may trust him heavily, but...
You're buying the property from the person who pays the taxes on it, and if you look at the tax plus, the person who's paying for it is Invektor Investments LP, which is not registered in the state of Texas. And the current registered value is five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Now, in twenty-seventeen, it was jointly owned by Migalito's Number Seven for three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars and three hundred and eighty cents, and Invektor, again, Investments LP, for four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and it doesn't note there that they actually ever paid any taxes on it. And it keeps going kind of on and on like that from twenty-sixteen to twenty-twelve, and it keeps looking like Invektor, the seller, hasn't been paying taxes on the property. And I looked up the company, and it's owned by Randy N. and Leslie G. Colott at Spring, Texas, forty-seven Gauntlet Drive, seven seven three eight two, and it isn't a business, it's a personal residence. I just find that all very odd, so...
I'm not sure why you think it's strange. I mean, there's people that live in Arizona that own property in town. We don't put a limit on who owns property in the town, and if they want to put it up for sale, they can live anywhere in the United States, they can hire whoever they want to be their selling agent. Our task, if we decide we wanted to buy it, is we get a Realtor that we know, and then there's, we do the investigation about the legality of the property. So, the fact that they don't live in Greenville and you don't necessarily like the, the Realtor, I'm not sure the point you're trying to, to make.
The point is the owner of the property is proposing that they are an actual company, and the company is actually a private residence.
Okay.
I just find it interesting, Sarah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry to waste your time.
Not a waste, we enjoy your, your comments.
Hello, I'm Gail Sprinkle at twenty-three oh four Lang Street in Greenville. First of all, I appreciate the timeline that you presented, that was very helpful, I thought. And I understand why you have to have confidentiality in real estate transactions. Um, and I don't believe that any council member had any nefarious intent in this, um, process. Um, but I did want to talk about transparency just a moment. I used to live in a third world country, so I may have a different perspective on transparency. And I heard at the last council meeting that I attended, um, some members saying that they really felt that they were being transparent because the information was available, but citizens didn't know that. And my point is that I think that this has been a great learning experience for all of us. Transparency is proactive. Transparency is communications campaigns. It goes beyond just a notice and that, um, letting a few people know that information is available. So, that's the only point I wanted to make about transparency, and I think it's been made over and over again tonight, so I won't belabor that. But I do want to, um, mention that it's, it's not simply the absence of, of, um, malice. I also wanted to say that as a downtown business owner, downtown building owner, I do find that price really surprisingly high. Um, and I hear, I appreciate you said that you had looked at the Emerald Ballroom and at, um, the Max American Grill. Those buildings were bought some time ago, and I have really noticed in the last, um, year especially, a real downturn. I've seen it in real estate, and I see it in foot traffic, and so whereas those prices might have seemed reasonable some time ago, I don't believe that that's reasonable now. That said, um, I don't really have strong feelings on whether you should buy it or not buy it. Um, I don't have strong feelings on what you would do with it if you were to buy it. I don't know what the needs are. I'm not opposed to more parking on the outskirts. I do believe we have plenty of parking in downtown Greenville. I think that Milton made some really good, um, suggestions, and I hope that you will follow up on those. Um, we have plenty of parking, it's just not managed very well. But I do not want that building to sit. We have so many vacant buildings. I addressed the council maybe a year ago about all of these, um, codes that we have on the books that are not being, um, enforced. And fortunately, um, there was action taken on the building that was next door to mine, so that my building's not longer being damaged by the degree that was on that building. But you walk up and down the street, the pigeon poop is still there, um, peeling paint, uh, broken windows, it's, uh, lights out, there's four lights out right now. I don't know why they're, they're still out, I've reported them a couple of times. So, um, to have this building sit vacant and deteriorate further really, um, just brings even more blight, and we have plenty of light. I look around downtown Greenville, I see so much potential, but we are not taking advantage of it. And with the downturn we're experiencing, please don't let that building sit. If you're not gonna buy it, great, um, I hope that somebody else will buy it very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please.
My name's Gary Grenewood. I live on Nashville, thirty-five oh two Nashville. Uh, I've been in the area of Greenville since nineteen sixty-six, lived out in Forest Heights, and twenty-five years ago we moved out of western Greenville, and I've never been able to participate in any of the functions of the city because I was not a resident within the city. And I had several pieces of property here, pay a lot of taxes, and I learned to be able to, to vent my frustrations. And, uh, I'm a retired engineer from, uh, East Systems, and, uh, I came to Greenville to work for Tim Kovat back at that time, and, uh, I, I have been a business owner here. We had, uh, Greenville trophies for thirty-five years over on Locking Brook Street. I'm sure a lot of you have done business with us there. But I am an investor. I look for property. Uh, I've got several pieces of property, prime property, that I'm holding on to for the future because I see the, the, uh, potential here in Greenville. And, uh, I think, uh, I have, I agree with a lot of what has been said here tonight, and I don't have a hangup with the history of the dealings or anything like that, uh, as far as the underhanded, uh, back home deals and stuff like that. I'm strictly an investor, and to me, that property is prime property. I don't care what people feel about it. Uh, I think there's gonna be somebody with deep pockets that are gonna come in, they're not gonna pay that, that amount of price for it. Eventually, they will negotiate something that's, that's relative reasonable for them to go in and tear that building down and put something there, uh, we have no idea what it might be. But, uh, my wife and I, we attend a lot of functions at the, uh, there at the, uh, municipal building. We enjoy it, uh, we always have trouble finding places to park. It's always seems like we have to park three or four blocks away from, especially in bad weather, that, that my wife's not gonna be happy with that. And I had to let her off and hit the door and then go park, and then I'll let my wife walk up there. We didn't have parking in that area, and to me, that was prime parking area. Now, whenever I picked up the newspaper and I saw the three and a half million to five million dollars, I said, "Wow," that got my attention right there. Uh, I do feel like that we need to park property. I think the parking lot would be a great investment. I don't know how much it would cost to do that, but at least Greenville would have that property for future use. If in the future, we felt like that we needed the structure that you're talking about, I think that would be great. But I think right now, it's, it's a good, I think it'd be, and then having changes to us to at least, to some way, find a reasonable amount of money that we can purchase it for, because I think that we can, we can use it, it will be valuable to us in the future, and not only that, it will sure satisfy a lot of us people that go to events that can do, uh, shopping down in, in Greenville. Now, these other places, they're talking about property, um, I'm not familiar with them, um, they may not be satisfactory to me, but, uh, that's basically all I've got to say about the future. I think the future is here for Greenville, and, uh, we've got people, I lived out western Greenville, and, uh, for twenty-five years, and we just moved back into Greenville for the last two years. And, uh, talking about these people that buy the property, yeah, we looked and looked and looked, we couldn't find a house at all in Greenville that we were satisfied, that my wife would be happy with. But over on Nashville, we come upon this house, I love the location, because it primarily is close to the hospitals and the things when you become a senior citizen, all those events, you know, we look at that, and our church is real close, and, so, it's really convenient for us, but when we looked at that property, it, they was asking way more for it than what, what they were gonna get. And, uh, so, but it was a piece of property, I went and looked at it, walked through it, I loved the house, the layout plan and everything, it's just perfect, what we've been looking for. But it needed a lot, a lot of attention, and we had already put earnest money down on it. People don't realize that when you're gonna be buying a piece of property, you, you do have to put earnest money down. Well, being a retired engineer and, and doing a lot of work on houses and everything, I looked at the house and I thought, mm, I could, I could go in there and fix it up. But I wanted to get a home inspector to go in with me and look at that, and I walked through it with him, and he pointed out things that me, that I didn't see, and he told me, he said, "Mr. Greewood," he said, "I wouldn't touch it with a ten-foot pole." He says, "This is gonna be a hard sell." So, I called my Realtor lady, and I told her, I says, "Just tear up that column back, we'll walk away with it." We were driving home, about an hour later, she told me, she said, "Mr. Greewood," she says, "They'd like for you to make an offer on it." And I told her, "It's gonna be ridiculous." I said, "Because the house needs far too much attention." And she said, "That's okay." She said, "We'll present it." Well, we negotiated, and I got it for about half of the company we're asking for, and I've already turned around, I've put money into it, brought it up to premium, uh, lodging, a beautiful home, and, uh, we've, uh, I can turn right around and sell it for about five, uh, fifty thousand dollars, more than I thought it would be. So, there, I'm saying, you can take a piece of property, and it's, it's what you make, uh, the value that property to be, and so, you can, we can think, this year probably have a, if we can negotiate a more reasonable price, or we can walk away with it from it, but somehow or another, somebody with deep pockets, I guarantee they're gonna come in. If they're already buying a property, I've, I've got some property that they, I've already had contact with people that were looking for investment to build homes, and, uh, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And one of the things that did get highlighted is the fact that the council, during part of our discussion, and I didn't have it in my presentation, I apologize to that, was the fact that the council said... was the fact that the council said, if we buy that, it's going to be years before we decide to build anything there because we don't have the money to do it. I've been mayor for three and a half years. We have not borrowed money against the city. We're trying to pay off the debt that has been accumulated over the past and has been presented on a number of occasions. Right now, it looks like in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three timeframe, there's a major drop in the amount of debt service that the city has to pay. But as a whole, this council's not interested in building a big debt unnecessarily. Ready?
My name is Randy Tarkley. I live at seven oh eight St. Aaron's Avenue. I think I just hopped the mic.
I got your right hand.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I wanted to make just a couple of things clear. I am the Realtor that approached the mayor after our Board of Development meeting, not during the Board of Development meeting. When you choose to serve on boards and commissions with the city, you do not have to take a vow of poverty. Okay? I'm in the real estate business and I have been for fifty years. So when I get up in the morning and I check the MOS and properties that are for sale, I try to see what is for sale, I try to match that property with a potential buyer. So it was natural for me to see that that property came available, who would be a logical buyer for it. One of the principles that we use in acquiring real estate is the principle of assemblage. That's where a property owner has the opportunity to acquire property that is near them, adjacent to them, or whatever, to enhance the location that they are already occupying. So that was the reason why after the Board of Development meeting on the twenty-first of August, I coached the mayor outside the meeting, after the meeting had been adjourned, and said, are you aware that this property is for sale? I pursued that with them as any agent would do for his client. The city of Greenville is my client. The city of Greenville is not paid via commission. I am being paid, as is typical in our industry, by the seller. And so I have cooperated with the selling agent, which is a Keller Williams agent by the name of Danny Peter. Okay, nobody is going to lie to say Danny Peter. Danny's been very forthright with us and everything that we've done. It was the intention from the very beginning to try to approach this so that the best opportunity for purchasing the property could be made by the city of Greenville. And the best way to do that was with a confidential buyer. I have done this numerous, numerous times in my fifty years of doing this. It's not unusual at all to write up a contract. Those of you that are attorneys understand that. We do it all the time where a person can write a contract as unassigned. And that's exactly what we did. We were able to find a confidential buyer who would then assign it to the city at the proper time. We've done all the things. The city manager has been tremendously helpful. We've ordered the necessary reports that we needed to. There's been no effort whatsoever to try to undermine anything. I want to make sure that everybody understands that I am representing the city because this is what I do. I happen to be the chairman of the Board of Development, but this is not a Board of Development project, never was, doesn't intend to be. There's no conflict there. And again, if I had known that I would have to take a vow of poverty in order to be on the Board of Development, I might have thought otherwise. The fact of the matter is that when you do take those, those chairships and members, you do have to forego properties. And there are things that I have had to forego in my business because of the fact that there might be a potential for conflict. But I've been doing this long enough to know when there is or when there is not conflict. I want to thank the city for allowing me to help you in this. Whatever decision you make, you've made the right decision by at least trying to isolate this property as a potential for growth sometime in the future, possible. But whatever the city council decides to do, I'll certainly relay that to the sellers and hopefully we can get this resolved one way or the other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Clay Williams. I live at thirty-two sixteen Washington Street, westbound the street from that property. I'd like to commend the council for taking the initiative and planning for Greenville's future. That said, I cannot address the future office space requirements of the city, but I do feel like I can address the cost and condition of the property that we're talking about. I believe that it's a very overpriced piece of property. What I see, I went to the grocery store regular basis because it was in my neighborhood and I was disappointed when it was gone. I was thrilled when it came. Unfortunately, every time it rained, they had buckets falling out of the building to, to address the leaks that were there and people mopping up. Unfortunately, the building is not in good shape. We have an interesting situation with regards to the tax assessment on the property. For years while it was a going business, it was assessed at about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. When it closed, well, in two thousand seventeen, it was four fifty-five. In two thousand eighteen, it went up to five hundred and ninety-nine thousand. I assume that was because the, when you're selling up this property, it's nice to have the assessment go up. Probably the tax collector said, okay, what are you selling the property for? And of course, what you want to get is a high price. So you say, it's worth five hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. And if you're selling it, you don't object to that kind of assessment. What I believe that you've got there is a piece of property. James is right, the value of the land is eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. And that's been the same for the last seven years. And that, I believe, is probably what the property is actually worth. Anything above that, what you're really doing is buying some acreage, one point three acreage. I wish the highest and best use of the property would then have a grocery store come back. I would love that to be the case. Unfortunately, I don't believe that is going to happen. So if indeed what you're going to be doing is buying a piece of property that you'll have to do the asbestos containment, tear the building down, and then turn it into a parking lot until your needs are there. And the fact is that you're, it's ideal to have a piece of property right next to you. But for instance, be a piece of property directly across the street, on Washington Street, across King Street. That's got a value of four hundred, forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars per acre. This property's got a value of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars an acre. So evidently, it's valued more just because it's next to you. But as far as the actual quality of the building and the property itself, it's really a liability more than an asset. I love the location, I love the fact that you're planning for the future. I love the fact that if indeed you have needs, that would be an ideal location. But I also see from the means that you've just expressed, the property right, directly behind the police department that we own, sounds like an ideal property because of the tie-in of the police and fire department. Like I say, I can't address what the needs of the city are in the near future and whether you're thinking about it, and I appreciate that. But I would encourage you to think of terms of that property being worth approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars and not four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes? You can be next.
Hi, I'm Denise Atkins. I live at twenty-five ten Rolling Hills Drive. My councilman is Mr. James Evans. And I appreciate you all doing this tonight. And particularly, James, for you asking for our input and wanting to know what we think. It's, if I disregard how we got here, the article in the paper, the misunderstandings, disregard all that, I think what you're asking the citizens to do is decide and give feedback to our representatives who work for us if we think it's a good idea to buy this property for four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I don't think I can support buying a property for four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we don't have a defined need for. I understand building for the future and planning for the future. But right now, we have concerns that people have expressed tonight and needs in this city that they don't feel there's a plan to meet. So if we don't have a defined use for this, why would I spend my money if I was buying a property as a person for something that I don't know what it's going to cost me in the future? I think my concern is, whatever you decide to do with it, a, another store, a, whether it becomes a parking lot or office building, whatever, it's going to cost the taxpayer something down the road. It doesn't come for free. So my question is really just maybe food for thought, you don't have to answer. But why would we go this far down the path of spending four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars without a plan?
We have not committed to spend four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That was, that was a price that we offered up so that we could get access to the building and do the investigation. And as I've said at least a couple of times tonight, the decision about whether that's a price we're willing to go forward with has still not been decided by your representatives.
Correct.
The information that we got concerning the KSA report and the asbestos report, we were going to evaluate that at our council meeting. But it got blown out of proportion that we were doing all sorts of things that was not part of what our plan was or what our thought process was. And with the Texas Open Meeting Act, it really gets a very goosey kind of situation that it, since we've already discussed it as a whole, if we go and start talking to each other without being in a identified and broadcast meeting, then it's easy to bring up the aspect that you've got a walking forum. And that's a violation of the Open Meeting Act. So we've worked very hard to try and keep those discussions to the executive session where we do have long discussions about the benefits, the price, is this where we want to go and this is what we've got to do? That's why we were elected, is to try and do those kinds of things for the city. And that's what we're attempting to do.
I understand that. And I am familiar with the Open Meeting Act. And I think you guys are taking a good step, getting the citizen in good. I'm just giving my opinion and something that I don't know that everyone has considered. We're all focused on the facts we have today. You've done what you can to get the facts for us. But what are you going to do with this property? What cost is going to come in the future? And I don't think anyone can answer that because it hasn't been decided. For me, as a taxpayer making a decision about my tax dollars, I need that information to know if it's a good deal. If we're going to turn it into a parking lot that's going to cost forty-seven hundred dollars per space, whoever it was that had that figure, then I would have to say no. But if it's going to turn into an office building that's going to alleviate a lot of problems for the city, then maybe there's a benefit. I'm having trouble, aside from all the facts we know today, of seeing the benefit of going forward without a defined plan. That's all I'm trying to ask the question and I hope that council has some more of a plan than I'm aware of right now.
Okay, thank you. Barbara?
Hi, I'm Barbara Horan. And my interest is in downtown, twenty-seven twelve Blue Street, the Texan Theater. And I'm very excited. When we started talking about this, I had the whole sensational scared reaction that the paper gave me. But as I started thinking about it, and Kevin will probably agree with me, there's a bunch of seats in your place and nowhere for them to park. And I was like, when I was little, I went to the GMA. They said it's been there forever. Of course, it didn't call it the GMA at the time, it was Greenvale Municipal Auditorium. We would go an hour to hour and a half early so that we could park on those places right beside the place so we didn't have to be stuck in traffic or walking amongst people. So there was, even fifty years ago, there was a reason to go early and we needed parking. There wasn't enough parking. So as I was thinking about this building, I first thought, city offices, building, why? And I went, oh wow, look, I can put the city offices if we need them on the first floor and build up and give us two floors. Did you say a hundred and twenty spaces in that place? I was like, oh look, that's another two hundred parking places above those offices. Or we can do the whole thing as a parking garage. I started coming up with plans for that area. And I was very excited about it because, as Gail said, we need more parking or at least people think we need more parking downtown. I actually have plenty of parking in my place because I don't hold that many people. I have a hundred seats. I can get a hundred cars in the blocks around me. So I don't personally need it, but if I'm going to have walking traffic and people come into my building, they want to have a place to park. And I made the building across from the GMA a walking place. Have people, have, oh look, they don't have to get out of the cars. They can see the pictures, but if they want to read what the pictures are about, they get out of the cars and walk. And once they start walking, they start spending money and start finding places to stop and go in. The asbestos is what stopped my project. I'll tell you, it costs ten times more than I planned. We halted for a bit on doing more building or finishing out the inside. So the other thing we could do with it, what we're seriously missing downtown, although I offer my places for that, is restrooms. So if we have a place, if we have a building there, probably have to get rid of the one that's there. We can immediately have a few parking spaces. But then we could have offices, restrooms, all kinds of things, maybe on the first floor. And outside of the building, much like mine, could be another tourist attraction to bring more people from out of town. We put it on Texas highways and all those places and have them come to Greenville. And they spend out-of-town money in Greenville, help fix those streets, help fix all that other stuff. And they go back home and we get to enjoy what they left here. And I think that kind of works all my points. I'm very excited about it. I think, I feel like I'm the only one in here. I think it would be an awesome thing for us to get and I can find all kinds of uses for it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. As far as the parking goes, the GMA, when we remodeled it, we reduced the overall number of seats. And I think with the new remodeling, that we've got about fourteen hundred, give or take a little bit, seats. So getting the parking lot behind the GMA open, which it always is when we have a function to GMA, that's, that's been a standard. Parking in the post office parking lot, that's been a standard, we use that. We try and make it, but when you're trying to get people, we're sending, it's not unusual for the shows now to have seven, eight hundred people, sometimes more. You cannot park everybody in an easy walking area. And so we get a lot of people that want to park nearby. They don't want to walk four blocks or more. And some of the structures that were identified as being good, sound, structural buildings, such as the one over by the exchange building, I would suggest you go over and take a look at it. Pieces of concrete falling out of the roof in the parking garage is not my idea of a staple facility. And if you wanted to go ahead and build additional in there, you're going to be very expensive in trying to use that. The city or the county is going to have to look at that, they're going to have to make an assessment. But I don't think that's a place that we really ought to be banking the future of Greenville on to identify that that's a great parking spot. Does anybody else have any questions? Yes?
Puff Jones, I live at ten five one five World. If you would, could you just go back to the timeline just a little bit where you said it was? Okay, that's all right. Basically, where, where you had said that it was, the council was available to start talking about it. Now, at what date was that, I guess?
That would be November sixteenth is when it was opened up, that they could talk about it.
When did the city, as the city first talk about it to the public? When was it brought to public attention? Not, not where the council members could, could talk about it, but when, when did you guys talk about it or John, I talked about it until Harold Banner brought it up?
Well, frankly, we aren't representatives of the people in town. That's why we were elected, is to be their representative. Your council member had the opportunity and if you wanted to find out, they could have come and knocked on your door. Each of these council members have a district. They have people, voters in there. They are the representatives for making decisions on this. Because if, we've got thirteen thousand registered voters in the city. If you were to try and get thirteen thousand people into a facility, first of all, that would overflow the, the GMA. But if you were to try and get that, there's no way you could get a decision. So years ago, the city decided that they ought to have council members to be their representative. So when they were released, when the council members were released, they were told they could go ahead and explain everything that they wanted to to the people within their districts with no limitations. We do not, we do not, we do not publish documents on social media.
But how would I know to ask? If I didn't know, did it all hang on? But none of the council members come out and said, hey guys, I got something I want to tell you. It's just not really, it works that way now. If I asked my council member and he could tell me, I'm sure he'd agree. But as far as just, you know, expecting them to go out and be their voice or the press release, I think that's the problem. I mean, I, I understand what's going on, but I'm just saying, in the future, I think the city would be ahead of the curve in the case that if you guys just would have made the press announcement when everybody was able to talk about it. And I think, I think people would feel a lot better about that part of it. So on that, my next question is, you guys, if I understand correctly, and if I'm wrong, tell me, the price you negotiated, four seventy-five, was that based on the building having value to the city?
Yes.
Okay. And tomorrow night, you guys are going to discuss, I believe you said, what, what your future intentions are as far as the contract, whether you're going to stay with it, whether you're going to renegotiate it or eliminate it?
Correct.
Okay. As anybody, as far as, or John, ask experts what it's going to cost to remove that building and what the value of that property is, just property. No building there, as if the building wasn't there. Do you have a number of what the value of that property would be, just on market value?
The KSA report, which was the building evaluation, it, the KSA made their assessment of what they think it would cost to tear the building down. As far as, as what is the overall cost of everything, I think we, we laid that out. We did the investigation. The, the people that did the asbestos gave us a range of between fifty and seventy thousand dollars to eliminate the asbestos. So yes, we're evaluating this, we're looking at this. But the original offer, in answer to your question, was that there, that building had some value and could be used.
And have you guys come up with a value, what, what it's worth, just the property without use of the building?
We have not had the opportunity as a council to discuss the results of this, this KSA report or the asbestos report. That was part of what we had intended to do, but it got blown out of proportion. And we were asked to put everything on hold and have a public session. So the council has not discussed among ourselves about what is the effects of the KSA report? What is the effects of the asbestos report? Is that a good value? Should we just walk away from it? Should we offer them, you know, fifty K? Should we offer them whatever the price is and see where it goes? That's something that we will do tomorrow night.
All right. Well, and that's why I'm asking, if you're going to make some of those decisions possibly tomorrow night, shouldn't you know what the value of the property is, just as an empty lot?
We look at the same tax code that you look at.
Thank you very much.
And by the way, we don't set the tax rate. The city's not responsible for that. Otherwise, my taxes wouldn't go up.
Any empty lot around, around that area relatively, what's the value of it, empty, versus what's the value of this property, just empty? Because I mean, you had determined or they determined that the building has no value. Actually, it's a liability. So I think, I say it has to be moved, I guess it was out there. But as far as to the city, it's a liability. And that's what I'm getting at. Is the property just worth, because right now, the property, you guys have it under contract at about eight dollars a square foot, just property?
We have an offer. We don't have a sale contract. We have an offer to buy it.
You have a signed contract though, don't you?
We've got an agreement that allows us to either back out and it does not exclude us from renegotiating the price.
I understand, but it's still a contract. It's a real estate contract.
Yes.
Exactly. So you have a contract at eight, roughly eight dollars a square foot on a piece of property down there that has a liability on it.
But we didn't know at the time we were doing that, that there was a liability.
I understand that. I didn't want to get that. So what I'm saying is, so wouldn't you want to come up with what the value of it is now, based on what the liability is there? That's all I'm saying.
Yes, and we will do that.
Okay. How, how would you go about doing that?
We have a real estate agent that's, that works on that and knows what the property is. We will discuss it among ourselves. We will look at what the tax value is. We'll take a look at what the, the condition of the building in, it is, what it would cost us if we decided to buy it and tear it down. All of these things will be evaluated. It's not just to pull a number out of your pocket and say, that's what it's worth.
That's what I'm asking now. And that's what I was asking, have you guys done any of that yet? Or you're just saying that you're going to do it moving forward?
As I identified, we didn't get the KSA report and the, the other in time that we could discuss that in a council meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Hey, council, Al Ickes, twenty-five, ten Rome, Mills Drive. Listening to everybody tonight, a couple of things have stood out. The business owners downtown are looking to revitalize downtown. Fine. When you're looking at this property, you're taking a six hundred thousand dollar piece of property off the tax rolls. So by your own discussion tonight, you can't even look at doing anything until twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Four taxing entities are losing three million dollars out of their tax base.
I'm not sure why you said we can't do anything until twenty-twenty-two.
Well, even if you turn that into a parking lot, and you had said budget-wise, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, you, you get a dip where possibly you could just build it or something.
No, I said that that's when our debt structure drops down. We have not decided that in the next year or two years that we have to have a building there. We have decided that we will get to the point, just as we've done when we buy fire trucks, we put money aside so that we can do a pay-as-you-go and quit borrowing money and putting the city in debt. When, the discussion we had was when there was money available and we had a need, then we would evaluate and evaluate what we needed to do there.
But until that point, that, that parcel will remain empty and off the tax rolls, producing no revenue or poor taxing issues.
And if it sits empty like it is and the people walk away, there's still no taxes.
But anyway, I, I just think with the amount of downtown property between the state-owned, county-owned, city-owned, nonprofit-owned, that are taxing exempt, we're really stranded to find any money to do any revitalization downtown. Taking one more piece of property off is just putting, making that bucket a little bit deeper to.
I think that what you're missing is the taxes that are paid is paid across the board. It's not, oh, this only comes from the city, therefore we can only spend it in downtown. People like you that are paying your property tax and me that are paying property tax, that goes into our overall budget and is used, and we think is best for the city based upon our needs.
That's correct. I understand your whole tax base is the entirety of it. Don't get me wrong. But downtown, the GMA alone, for example, it's assessed at seventeen million dollars value. It does not sit on the tax rolls. We don't pay one penny of say, of property tax on that to any entity. But the building's valued at seventeen million dollars. You've got a million dollars buildings downtown that are off the tax rolls, that are not producing any revenue to help revitalize the infrastructure. So you have to pull in from other areas of the city to do anything. And with the need citywide that we're facing, it's very difficult to do any revitalization downtown without getting ready.
Well, that, that GMA building has been on the city's roll for many, many years. It used to be a fire station, it used to be a police station, and before that, I don't know. But it's been there for many, many years. I think it was built in the fifties. So to suddenly come up and say, you guys aren't doing anything with that property, you're right, we're not charging taxes to the taxpayers for a building that we've owned for years and years and years.
Now, I was using that as an example, by taking an adjacent piece off the tax rolls, which will create a bigger hole in the tax base unless, and if you centralize your city offices and take, like we did with the old fire station, and put it back on the tax rolls, maybe you'll get some kind of balance out of it. But you don't want to, you don't want to reduce your tax base by taking more and more property off the tax rolls.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dwayne, Greenville, Texas, I'm from Greenville, Texas. The mayor just mentioned that the municipal building used to have the fire department, police department, meter maze, Greenville electric, city manager, everything used to be in that one building. And what we got now? We got fifty heavy gravity here. Government will constantly grow if we let it grow. They can take the money from the people. In this town, we're poor. You can look at per capita and you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. It went to twenty-one, it dropped to nineteen. I don't know what it is this year, I haven't seen it. But this town is poor. The TERS money was for infrastructure. And now they're going to hire a logger out of Buck Tussle, come in here and try and maneuver where we can go get in the real estate business again and get in the development business. When I go to a show at the GMA, I've been to one down there, walking is not a problem. We'll see Charlie Danny's, good show. I'm a big walker. If I go to American Airlines Center or go to House of Blues or any of those other places, I'll walk the lot park, maybe from the Market Square. That far, go see a show, that's not a big deal, go see a show. The GMA, I don't know if they ever make money. If they do, it's very little. But right now, the city needs to concentrate on infrastructure in this town. It's in total decay. It's in bad shape. The north side of town is just, I don't know how it functions. But we need money and need to use that TERS money for infrastructure. Not go out and expand government in this town. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Tracy Fenton, sixty-three, twenty-two, Stone, the site to this area, to the downtown Greenville area. But really, is there anybody else who's interested in buying this?
I'm not a realtor, but since we made the offer, I think it was off the market. Whether there was people that made an offer on it beforehand, I have no idea.
So, so we're looking at either may, maybe buying it, maybe putting it into a parking lot or not at the moment, and maybe looking at possibly redeveloping the building or not, and maybe turning it into offices with possible parking or not? Is that something that's helpful at the moment where we are?
There's a lot or not in there. I'm not sure that I can follow all of them. Anybody else? Yes. Lady over here.
Puff Jones, ten five one five, the road. Can you clarify what you meant when you said you received the report on the eighth, but there was not time to discuss in a meeting?
Yes. We had canceled the Thanksgiving meeting. We figured families would rather be with their families during Thanksgiving. So we canceled that last meeting. The next meeting, we typically meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month. Since we can't, we had the meeting on the eleventh, or I'm sorry, we had the meeting beforehand, then we canceled out the meeting for the Thanksgiving timeframe. And the next meeting would have been on the eleventh.
Okay. You had a meeting on November thirteenth, like it did not be discussed yet? That was more than seventy-two hours that's required to be posted.
We got the report on the eighth. We went through the, as identified up here, we had identified and released that on the sixteenth, that it could be discussed to the owner. So a meeting on the thirteenth, we still had a buyer that was not identified as the city. If you're trying to maintain that, that status to be able to buy the property and be able to negotiate it without people saying, oh, you're the city, I'm not going to do anything for there, then you maintain that.
When was the contract executed?
On...
October ninth?
October ninth is when we both came to an agreement on a price, and that's when we could get access to the building to take a look at it and get people in to do the evaluation.
Okay. When was the contract executed? October ninth. Okay. After October ninth, it doesn't matter who the buyer is on the contract because the contract is already executed. So I'm just trying to figure out why there was a need to keep it quiet for so long after that point?
Because we still wanted the ability to try and renegotiate a lower price if the building turned out to be in the kind of condition that it's in.
But what happened between the ninth and the sixteenth that allowed it at that point?
Between the ninth of...
October and November the sixteenth?
The, the building assessment was being done. We didn't know the condition of the building.
Right, but on November eighth, you did, correct?
On November eighth is when the report came back. On November ninth, it was given to the council members to look at. And on the sixteenth, they were told they could go discuss it to anybody.
Okay. My, my original question was, though, you stated earlier that the report was sent out or received or whatever you want to call it, on the eighth or the ninth. You still had plenty of time to discuss it at the meeting on the thirteenth. And, and my question is, what was the difference in the three days? What happened in the three days between the meeting on, I believe it was the thirteenth? It's November the thirteenth and the sixteenth that was so crucial in those three days that it couldn't have gotten on the agenda?
I'm not sure I can answer that question without looking at what was going on. And I'm not going to guess. Any other questions? The mayor had asked for an opportunity. Did you want to come up and, and speak again, Dwayne? Then you'll be next.
I was just talking to the sound of my point that I don't think the city should buy their property for eight bucks, because you got a property that worked just as well. And I have a question. Who was doing the negotiation on all of this, or whatever's happening out there?
The council members in, I'm sorry, the council members in executive session. I'm sorry, then I don't understand your question. We gave, we gave a number to Randy.
Who's we?
The council.
We wanted it in, in public meeting.
Nope, there wasn't.
It's done in executive session.
It wasn't, it wasn't a vote, so it didn't need to be done. And what you're talking about is when a vote becomes taken on, and that has to be in an open session. What we're talking about is using an agent, Randy, to take a number back.
I'm saying, it's clear, if no negotiating with Randy, by far it's hard to be doing that. The council hasn't given them that authority. If they get to do it in the executive session, it's going to be good.
It is good that an agent can work for the council. And the council tells me as a city attorney all the time what to do, every single meeting. And just because they don't vote on it in an open meeting, doesn't mean that discussions with an agent are improper.
Dwayne?
You had a digit earlier that there, in the TERS balance, is about two point seven, is that correct?
I think it's two point three.
Two point three? How much of that money is obligated thus far?
Of that two point three, there is only one contract that's the Texas town, or the town center, which is over there where, you know where that is.
Yes, I certainly do. How much of that money is obligated, that, that, what amount?
A total of two point eight, but we've got, right now, the way the contract is written, and it was poorly done so, is we've got for another twenty-five years to be able to pay on that. Because there was not a deadline put into that contract that said, if that contractor didn't do what he was supposed to do within next number of years, then this would go away. That part was totally left out.
Okay. Again, I'll say it one more time, we do not need to go and change the TERS agreement or the TERS bylaws until we already have the infrastructure to go. The city can go out and buy property.
Daniel, would you come and explain about the, the need for the TERS corrections? Daniel, would you come and explain about the, the need for the TERS corrections?
I believe what the mayor's asking us, what TERS changes would be needed in order for the council to be able to spend this TERS money directly. Uh, and basically, what we have, uh, in two thousand eight, uh, the council passed an ordinance um, and created the TERS. The TERS Board was named later on and adopted, uh, the legal document that's guidance for how TERS money can be spent. Uh, it's called Project and Financing Plan. Uh, the rules related to that are in chapter three eleven of the Texas Tax Code. Uh, chapter three eleven is a very long document, has many different requirements to set these up and, and many other requirements about how the money is spent. Our initial, uh, tax, uh, our TERS, uh, Project and Financing Plan uh, can be found online. Uh, I think that most of our documents are on, on the city's website related to this. But specifically, uh, the relevant document is ordinance oh eight, one thirty two. And oh eight, one thirty two, the oh eight, oh eight means it was from two thousand eight. Now, it took about a year for the final documents to come through from the TERS Board, and then they were approved by the city. Uh, if the city is to move forward with this plan, there's gonna be some changes, about ten words worth of changes to that document. And those will be recommended for, again, that's by the TERS Board and then approved by the council. Uh, and that will be done subsequent to actually pulling the trigger, so to speak, and using, uh, any of that two point three million dollars for this purchase or for any other expenditure.
What would those ten words do in order to change or allow the TERS money to be used far, but can't be allowed for me?
Um, well, specifically, it would allow for the purchase of this grocery store. Um, basically, uh, if, if anybody's interested in looking at it, there's two pages, eighteen and nineteen, that are on the original plans. Uh, one of them, uh, is a statement on page nineteen. Uh, they've had to be amended to include on a list, uh, the words municipal facilities or municipal property. Now, page before that is the, uh, list of estimated costs. Those are both pages that are in the Project and Finance Plan. This one, uh, would, uh, have about four words added, um, in a list of different items that, that can be used in estimated costs for that. The words here would be municipal facilities, acquisition and/or demolition. Um, and then there would also be a number in addition to, to the words that I'm talking about. So, um, I know that sounds very simple, uh, but it is not. Uh, and basically, those things would have to be changed for the TERS money to legally be used on this particular project.
We're bas, we're basically changing the guidelines or the rules right now in order to fit this project specifically. Just if I did not catch that, to purchase and demolish. Those words, isn't that what you said?
Uh, acquisition and demolition.
Yeah, demolish.
Yes, sir.
Just, can I just very quickly follow up? Any, please, okay. The Texas Tax Code, three eleven point oh eight identifies that the municipality or county, depends on who's got the TERS, may exercise any power necessary and convenient to carry out this chapter, including the power to cause project plans to be prepared, approved and implemented in the plans otherwise achieve the purpose of the plan. Two, acquire real property by purchase, comp demnation or other means and sell real property on the terms and conditions and in a manner it considers advisable to implement the project plan. Paragraph four says, consistent with the project plan for the role, A, acquire blighted, deteriorated, deteriorating, undeveloped or inappropriate developed real property or other property in a blighted area or in a federal assisted new community in the zone for the preservation or resor, uh, restoration of historic sites, beautification or conservation, the provisions of public works or the public facility or other public purposes. It also goes on to say that the power authorized within this prevails over any law or municipal charter to the contrary. So while the TERS Board may say, no, we don't wanna do this, the city council still retains the prop, the capability to override that and decide how to spend that, and that's as directed by the Texas Tax Code. Now.
Uh, yes, sir. I just was, uh, my memory isn't very good on this. Uh, was the TERS district created by a mayor vote of the council, or did that have to go before the public for a vote?
As I read back in two thousand eight, I think the, the overall TERS was, uh, brought up before the public. Now, Mr. Evans identified in when, when the board was appointed, following the requirements of the state and the school board. And if any of those taxing entities did not furnish somebody on that floor, then, and they had a very short period of time to do that, then the city would, would take that spot. And G I S D did not wanna in, be in there, so there is no TERS money set aside for G I S D.
Alright. If this, uh, TERS is currently worded, went before a public vote, wouldn't it be, uh, possibly a legal requirement and certainly a moral requirement that it go back before the public again if you're gonna change it?
It wasn't a public vote. This would be weird.
That's why I asked the question first.
I understand. I, I think there was some misunderstanding about what you're asking. There was not a public vote.
Oh, there was not a public vote on it? Alright, well, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
From Paul Park, I live at two oh seven Patterson Drive, here in Greenville. And I understand the blind agents and everything, does it? If anybody's familiar with big business, that happens all the time. It also happens as a seller to go through a blind agent. You wanna, if you're publicly trading, you wanna see your stock go to zero and ask tonight that you're just selling. So there's nothing unusual about that. My question is, out of this, when you have this potential purchase contract, is that four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a fixed price? Meaning, are you obligated for, for that?
No, we can walk away from it.
Okay. But that's the only way. You have to walk away from your existing potential contract. If we lose the thousand dollars earnest money, which you gotta be lucky, you didn't have to give away the whole five thousand, uh, but a thousand's a bargain. And the money that you spent on the surveys and whatever, you would be absolutely crazy if you didn't do that on going for buying it. Just like I always bet you, Randy Tarpley began to tell you about. The other one is, I'm sure Mr. Tarpley can tell you within the width of a break tonight what this property is worth. So it could very well be in your best interest to walk away from it. Especially considering that you already have property you can use.
It's not contiguous property that, in the other places that were identified. But if you were selling this piece of property and we said, based upon the structural report, the asbestos report, we're not willing to buy it at that price, and we give them another offer, you as a seller would make a decision whether we walk away and you keep the thousand dollars or whether you come down and meet a reasonable price.
That would be true. You could do that.
So we have that option.
Go all the way back to ground zero.
We could go back to ground zero and we can say, we'll offer you twenty five K, or we can give you a ridiculous number, and it depends on how serious he is about wanting to sell it and get out of the under.
That could be too. Yeah, you may be better to proceed where you are, cause the cat's out of the bag, that's the city's looking for.
Absolutely.
So if you go back in with another offer, they're gonna know who made the offer.
Well, they already know the offer.
Figure that out.
They already know that, they were told that back in November. That's when we changed it and when it was okay to release the document.
I understand. And the other one with your document that you have, the TERS, for that? I don't really understand why you even need that. If you're gonna use the stakes overriding when it doesn't, that's where you wanna go. And I'm just a dummy engineer, but with ten words, I can change the meaning of the constitution.
Sir. Okay. Uh, yeah, I mean, ten words, it can be a lot.
If you got the right kid.
That's right. Um, and I don't, I don't think what the mayor was saying is that, that there, that the council can just override it. The council is still subject, despite the very broad language in chapter three eleven of the Tax Code, they're still subject to only being allowed, uh, to use the money the way that the Project and Finance Plan reads. Um, they also have the power to change the Project and Finance Plan. So, uh, what we're talking about here is not, uh, some plan to just willingly override. Uh, there will, will have to be, uh, a, a public hearing, uh, on that, uh, separate from this meeting today. Uh, and, uh, the council will receive legal advice about doing that. From me and potentially from an outside counsel. By the way, I, I, a couple of you guys have mentioned, uh, hiring outside counsel to come in and, and use them as a workaround. Uh, the outside counsel was in the cards before we even started looking at this building. The outside counsel started talking to you about a completely separate TERS project, the one that's on the highway. Uh, so that is not the purpose of them being, uh, looked at for employment tomorrow night. Did I answer your question though, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I've got eight thirty five. I'm gonna close out the part of the public comments. At this time, is there any council members that would like to have, have anything else to say? If not, at this time, I'm going to close the town hall meeting. Thank you all for attending. It's greatly appreciated. We appreciate your input, and we're gonna do the best we can. Thank you very much.